I'd like to co-order the city council meeting of August 19, 2019. And I'd like to ask Councilmember Sutch if she'd like to read some of the comments.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I just want to announce that in closed session, Mayor Pro Tem Hawkins moved and Councilmember Plummer seconded, and the council voted 4-0-1 with Councilmember Sutch abstaining to reject the claim of J.C. Alameda. And we will actually be doing, do I need donuts about going back in? And we will be going back into closed session at the end of our regular meeting today here. Roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Hawkins.
Here.
Plummer.
Here.
Sutch.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Here.
And Fire Chief.
Here.
Police Chief.
Here.
Community Development Director.
Here.
And Administrative Services Director Wersky is absent, he's home of ill. City Attorney and City Administrator.
Item B is City Board's report on agenda posting.
At 3:45 on the 15th, the agenda was posted for public view.
Okay, item C is approval of agenda. Is there any additions, subtractions, changes? Seeing none, I will move to item D, which is presentations. There are none. Item E is public comment on non-agenda items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on the subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Does anyone like to speak on public comments?
I would like to salute Police Department because I thought National Night Out was very well done and it seemed like the attendance was probably twice what they had before. And it was really nice to see something positive happening in that park where normally I would go there in the daytime.
Anyone else like to speak on public comments? Seeing none, item F is consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be voted on in one motion unless a council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar, considered separately. And the items are number one, the approval of the meeting minutes of the city council's closed session meeting of August 15, 2019, and the open session meeting of August 5, 2019. Item number two is approval to pay invoices of previously budgeted expenses on August 20, 2019. And item three is approval of dispersments in an amount of $148,908.43 on August 16, 2019 for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer employee taxes, and retirement contributions, miscellaneous voluntary employee deductions, and retrospective pay. Is there any item that needs to be pulled by council members? Oh, Councilmember Sutch?
I don't want to pull anything but retrospective page, that'd be retroactive.
Thirty what?
Retroactive page, number three.
Oh, yeah, I think so. I don't know, don't they mean the same thing?
I don't know.
Introspective.
But I don't want to pull it, just that's.
Well, that's just the agenda.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Sutch has moved and Councilmember Plummer seconded to approve the consent calendar. There's no further comment. Ask for those who've voted aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. Okay, item G is unfinished business. It's the only one item. Consideration to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 859, amending section 4.04.020 regarding franchise requirements and adding chapter 4.1, or 4.11, rather, state video franchises to the Sonora Municipal Code establishing a public, educational, and government, or PEG, fee. And because of my close association with Access to Walleye, formerly known as Cable 8, I move to recuse myself and hand the mantle to the Mayor.
He did let me know this time. Okay, so staff. So we have in your packet the ordinance that you considered your last reading that was introduced. This would be the way to second reading and adopt the ordinance would allow the city to receive the 1% PEG fee that then could be used for public education and government uses and help fund the operations, at least improvements in facilities for Access to Walleye. Thank you, Council.
The only thing that I would ask is, in the future, annually, under 4.11.03, that we get some kind of audit of the number of Comcast customers. And the reason I ask that is, it's hard to go out and get sponsorships for many things to do with access to Walleye if you don't know how many people are watching.
Tim, just for clarification, this fee is already being, as I said, yes, it's being collected already. It's not just, we haven't taken it. That's my understanding. Any other counsel?
I do, and it came up before and I just didn't grasp it. But on 411.040, customer service penalties, the city administrator should monitor compliance, not state video franchise holders.
Your microphone.
What exactly are you monitoring? Just payments thereof, or... It was page of the, of the page there.
Are you talking about the language of 4.11.040, beginning of kind of like "B"?
"B"?
Yeah, just what exactly are they monitoring for compliance? Because the fines and penalties are pretty heavy, but it doesn't spell out what they're, is it just payments?
It's just compliance with the operations.
Okay.
And the payments are being done on compliance with state and federal, sorry.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
I have some concerns about this. I only know nine people that watch the Comcast Cable station. So I'm curious to know of the five of you, how many of you have Comcast? Just one. And you don't know what your viewership is. The other people who provide television service in this community don't pay a fee for anything. There is no original programming for the most part that I've seen on To Walleye Access. And I have some concerns about the financial liability of To Walleye Access and whether that will continue to exist. So I'm not sure it's worth it to go to all this trouble to establish a PEG fee if they then are gone in a few months. So I have some serious concerns about this.
Any other public comment?
So I will bring it back to the council. Connie, I know this is something that's been near and dear to your heart, and I know you went through since I'm the alternate for Access to Walleye. Maybe you could explain some of the stuff that's happened because it opened my eyes.
Well, number one, I would not have brought this to the council unless I felt comfortable that Access to Walleye, Cable 8, is moving in the right direction. We've added this Sonora Planning Commission, To Walleye Utilities District, to the transparency so that people can watch those meetings as well. We are in the process of trying to put high school sporting events up on the channel. And we're looking for more and more opportunities within the community to show things that are available within the county. Obviously, we can only use PEG dollars for facilities and equipment. We have added HEB equipment, but the PEG channel is not HEBD. But it's growing a business that, that can sustain itself. We have a, Jerry Day is the station manager. We have a solid board now. We just need to move forward and find other paying customers.
Jerry, could you come to the microphone and maybe explain a little bit of some of the things that you're doing with, for people that don't have Comcast?
Sure. I'm Jerry Day, station manager. So what we've done is, we have a limited audience with Comcast, as we mentioned, only one person on the board. The council has Comcast. So what we have done is, we've reached out beyond Comcast. We now stream all of our content online, accesstowalleye.org, so anyone with the internet can see all of our content. In addition, we have created Roku and Apple TV channels. Roku in particular has become very popular for people to use such over-the-top services so that they just get their television through their internet connection, through a Roku box. So that's very common. So we've made it so that we can reach 95% of To Walleye County and better serve them, whereas when we were just limited to Comcast, that was a minority of the community members. So that was one of the first steps, was to extend our reach, upgrade all of our equipment. And now we have studio equipment and we have live capabilities. So we intend to do a lot more local content.
What's some of the ways that you're going out and getting that content? There's football games or possible different games?
Yeah, we're working with a group called North Cal Sports TV. They've been producing, broadcasting local and all throughout California, specifically basketball and football, some other sports, but those primarily. So we have an agreement with them to co-broadcast these games. And we're starting this Friday. We have a lineup of 10 high school football games over the next 11 weeks. The one week that we don't have high school games, because five weeks for both teams. And that week we'll be offering a Vesto Junior College live game. And we're also right now working on our schedule for basketball, which will be festival and also coffee college.
What about sponsorships or advertising? How does that work?
Well, we are limited in how we can do that. Basically, we use what is considered PBS model, whereas we can't do call-to-action ads, like come this week and buy for $18.50. The sponsorships are more of describing the business. You know, this game is sponsored by, by the pizza machine. We've been in business for 20 years. We make pizza. Come see us at address. So, so we're somewhat limited into how we can advertise. But we've built a model with North Cal Sports TV, a model for sponsorship for the football games in particular, and we're actively acquiring sponsors right now.
I'm sorry, did you say that live streaming on YouTube is available as well?
Yes.
Live stream?
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
We live stream on accesstowalleye.org. We can also live stream on YouTube. North Cal Sports TV currently livestreams all their games on YouTube.
So you're limited to the internet access?
Right, and we intend to utilize so much of the live stream on YouTube, but also the Facebook live for those break units. We have that ability to go right to the social media network as well.
Thank you, Jerry. So I guess I'll put my two cents in. If this were a, I guess, what we call an increase, essentially, if it were a tax increase, I wouldn't vote for it. But it's already there. Comcast is already pulling it in. Access to Walleye's board is very responsible. I've sat in on a couple. I've had to, and poor Jerry got to hear me rant at him a couple times and asked some off-the-wall questions. But, you know, the whole board, in my opinion, is very good. They're very, I guess the term I would use, almost apolitical. They don't come in, they want to come in. They don't come in for a certain thing. They want things to work better and be financially responsible. And I've been very happy to see that. I'm all for it. I know that it's possible in the future if the board somehow goes downhill, the station goes downhill, and the city can always pull out. So I feel that protects the city in that part. That's my two cents. I'm very happy to see the way things are going, Jerry, and I think Access to Walleye, I'm very proud to see it happen.
And I'm happy to be a customer.
Good. And one of the board supervisors' meetings, the Granica system went down. I was watching it at home, and Jerry immediately put it up on Access to Walleye, a backup system.
I've got a sort of odd question. Maybe Jerry's the best person to answer it, but it might be unanswerable for the moment. And that is, I have cable internet from Comcast, but no TV. Do I pay the PEG fee?
No.
No. It's just for TV, our TV service.
Any more from council? Okay, so I guess I will ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? And we have one abstention.
No, it's not abstention.
From Acusel.
Yeah.
Sorry, I guess still getting nervous up here. So item H is public hearings. We have none. Item I is new business. Number one is consideration to adopt resolution number 08-19-2019-A, approving a funding agreement for Give Someone a Chance, GSAC, to provide portable toilets at the Stockton Road homeless camp. Mr. Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members. Based on the council's direction, the city attorney has prepared for you an agreement that would allow you to provide funding to in part fund the placement of portable toilets at the homeless camp on Stockton Road. And the memorandum has been prepared. It describes the authorities from the council to do that. And you have a resolution that would authorize the execution of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Sonora and Give Someone a Chance. I would ask, based on some recent information about the cost, that the dollar amount be increased to $1,750 instead of the $1,600. So that would be the only change that would reflect should we approve the resolution. The action would be to adopt the resolution and we will update the agreement with that number, the authorized execute it. Yeah, that gives me the authority to sign. So with that, the attorney is here to respond to any specific questions regarding authorities and findings for the content of the ordinance that has been prepared per the council's direction of two meetings ago.
Okay, is there any questions for staff?
I have two to start with. Is the bid from A&amp;A Portables solid?
Yes.
Okay.
So, so we're not entering into a contract with anybody to provide service. We are providing funding based on the information we have today, and that's all the funding we're going to provide. So if the bid comes in higher or there's other costs, the city's obligation is only to the limit of what's been specified in the agreement and authorized by the resolution.
Should we consider one of the toilets on the city side of the road?
We're not giving direction to how they use the money. We're only providing funding. We don't want to incur any liability or other obligations by entering into this agreement.
Okay.
So if they did decide to do that, that's their decision?
Their decision.
It's up to them where they're placed and how they're placed.
Any other questions, Connie?
I have a comment after.
Okay. Any other questions for staff?
Didn't mean to speak to you, Mr. Miller. It's remained our question.
And no comments, no questions yet? Do you?
No, I know this such as well.
Okay, then I'm going to go ahead and open it to public comment. Is there anyone like to speak on this item?
Well, okay. Gosh, unless you've all missed me, if nobody gets to say anything. I have a lot of concerns about this because every time I turn around and the citizens are asking for something, they're being told, oh, that's not our job. Oh, we don't have money. Oh, we can't do this. Oh, we can't do that. And then you go out and ask other people to do things for you. And now you want to give my tax dollars to an agency to do this when we can't even get the already established toilets at the fire museum open for the public to use. I believe I currently have to pay for two porta-potties at the farmer's market, which are only open during the hours of the farmer's market. The rest of the time, they're locked. So I'm paying seven days a week, 24 hours a day, to rent porta-potties that are only open for, what, five hours? Then you have a toilet down here by the police station that's not open all the time either and doesn't get cleaned on the weekends. So sometimes it's locked because it's too dirty. And I've had a lot of complaints about downtown Sonora being dirty, and I was told that my criticism was unwarranted. And then the merchants got, when I stopped cleaning it, then the merchants got upset. And now they're cleaning downtown, and they're not getting any help from you. So how many people live in these camps that this money is going to help? And are we helping them or are we enabling them compared to the rest of us who live in the city limits and our visitors who come to downtown Sonora and have to deal with the vomit and the dog poop and the cigarette butts and the local merchants and the neighborhood people who drive to Washington Street and dispose of their business and personal trash in the public trash cans, which is kind of a gift of public funds, in my opinion. So I just have a lot of concerns about giving money to someone else when you're not willing to spend your own money on things that a lot of us have asked for.
Okay. Is there anyone else like to speak on public comment? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the council. Connie, you said you had some comments.
I have a, number one, I'm very disappointed in the county that they could not come up with $1,750 to support this project. I understand there's a problem with money in the county, but they do have discretionary funds. Most of the homeless are living in the county and are urinating and defecating in the city of Sonora. Additionally, I have heard stories of a homeless person going into a bathroom at a business and covering the walls with excrement, with, and the business owner has to bear the cost of having their bathroom sanitized. This is a health and safety problem, and I want to thank ATCA and Sonora Area Foundation for stepping up to the plate. But it's a city-county problem, and the county needs to be involved.
Any other comments?
I just think of this.
No, I saw Colette.
No, you.
Sometimes I tend to get excited and just start talking.
I wasn't looking.
You know, Carol, I've had a lot of the same concerns as you. I've had numerous homeless, and there's all different degrees of homelessness. So I'm not even getting into that debate because a lot of people have heard me. And it is a public health issue. I can't tell you how many times my wife and I go hiking somewhere and find things, and I'm hoping that this will alleviate, for $1,700. And I'm hoping that this will alleviate, for seventeen hundred dollars' costs coming from the city of Sonora, I'm hoping that this could alleviate fifty percent of the issues that we're finding in the street or on the sidewalk. It's not a be all end all, but it is a public health matter. And for seventeen hundred dollars, I think it's a wise decision to work as a group, to work together to try to help alleviate some of this. You know, I, I, my heart goes out to a lot of people that are homeless that have had, I, again, a lot of people here know my situation. I had, happened three years ago now, so it's a little emotional for me. But the reality is we have to do something. There's hepatitis, there's other things out there. And if we can alleviate fifty percent of the problem for seventeen hundred dollars, it does help protect public health. So that's, that's kind of, that's where I stand on this, so that's, I guess, all I have to really say.
I will say it better.
So who's next, five, I mean, Colette or, you know, nothing yet, okay, Colette?
Um, I, I guess there are many people that, who I would like to thank for this. Many, many people know that I sit on this city council because of the homeless issue in part. And this isn't a solution to homelessness, but it is, it is a small step to make their lives a little bit easier. It's a small step to protect public health. It's a small step to help the merchants in town who have had to put up with things they shouldn't have to be putting up with. It's a small amount of money and, and the thing about, that is so heartening about this for me is, is that it has been truly collaborative. In the very early days of, of thinking about this, I called Brian Campbell from the county and called Mark Dyken. And the three of us spent time at the camps trying to figure out where these toilets should, should be placed and if this was, was really a good idea. And Ryan, Ryan also another day spent a lot of time with me. We went to several of the camps to think, to see where these, these toilets should go. This is really a humanitarian issue as well as a public health issue. And although I understand thinking that it's enabling, I, I disagree because I think that it is to, to give people a little bit of dignity is part of, is the first step on the road to, to shelter. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank this council who, when I brought this up, voted five zero to approve it, that the city administrator and the city attorney took away all the hurdles to this for us very, very quickly. At Connie the next morning sent an email to ATCA, really making a very good case for funding this. And they immediately said yes. I spoke to the visitors bureau about funding and they were interested. But they then spoke to Sonora Area Foundation and several people donated their money, their funds that they keep with Sonora Area Foundation because they supported this project. So although the county is not at this point involved, I trust that they will be. I know that there's interest there. I just couldn't forcefully ask them to fund this when they were thinking about cutting libraries or cutting recreation or laying off staff. It just, the optics aren't great right now for that. So I'm grateful for this, I'm grateful. I feel very, very grateful. And, and actually the people at this camp and at this point, there are sixty-two people living there. Are also very grateful. They're not entitled, they don't feel entitled. They feel a whole lot of gratitude, so I'm, I'm overjoyed. Thanks.
Well, I can't thank you, Colette, enough for bringing this to, to us and, and taking the lead and making this happen. You've done a lot of groundwork and, and, you know, we have to start somewhere, we have to do something. We have to, uh, try to alleviate or try to help in some manner, even if it's a small matter in our rural community. And I'm grateful that he brought it up and brought it to us and that ATCA has stepped up and, and the foundation stepped up. And I truly hope that the county does as well in the end. You're right, Connie, this is a city and county problem. And it's only going to get, it's, it's only going to get, I don't want to say solved because I don't know if it can solve an entire homeless problem. But it's going to be greatly alleviated if we work together. And I hope that can come in the future. And I would be very disciplined if it, if it's not. And I don't think I'm the only one. And certainly not the only one sitting up here, so.
Well, we'll take the late.
So this is a one-year trial.
Trial.
Well, we'll see how many of the toilets get pushed down the hill.
Well, if that happens, it gets pulled. It gets pulled.
And I think, you know, with Hazel, Hazel has a lot of rapport with some, most of the folks there. So I think that among, among other people that, that they'll get the, I know, I must, don't think that will happen. Certainly not, you know, that they're, they know better. I think most of them do, but not all of them, so.
Sure.
I'm sorry I left Hazel out in my little list of gratitude. She has been a huge partner in this, huge partner. She's introduced me to so many people and she's, she has taken me to the camp on Stockton Road many, many times. And she deserves a whole lot of gratitude. She's also agreed to assume all liability and all responsibility for this. And that's, that's a huge gift to this community.
Yeah, I think if something happened down there, they'd have to, they'd have to pay for Hazel. So, okay, looking, any further comment or looking for a motion?
I imagine Colette would want to make the motion.
Sure. Okay, but you also have to tell me how to do this.
So move doesn't mean agenda.
I make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the city administrator to execute an agreement to donate funds to provide portable toilets at a homeless camp in the city of Sonora.
And it needs to have seventeen fifty.
Yeah, seventeen fifty. For what, did you?
Yeah, yes.
Seventeen five hundred.
I don't see.
There's, I don't know.
Seventeen hundred and fifty.
Oh, so for, I'm sorry, and to increase the amount to seven, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved by council member Satch and seconded by council member Ploner to approve the resolution with the amendment. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, call for motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to say no because the county didn't step up to the plate. Even though I went out and found some money for the project, but I'm voting no.
Okay. Is there any extensions?
I will show this.
They were up to five.
Huh?
They were up to five.
Up to five on the vote.
Well, no, she just said she's voted no.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
They're voting first.
Okay, so the, the resolution passes four, forty-one, with council member Williams voting no. All right, new business item two is presentation by the community development director on, on the update to the housing element of the city of Sonora general plan. Community development director.
Thank you. So tonight we wanted to just give you a little update on where we are in preparing the housing element for the city of Sonora. As you know, that our housing element for the city has to be updated every five years and therefore covers a five-year planning period. So I want to give a little background for the public and for all of you that have not been through this process before especially. State law started in nineteen sixty-nine, required a housing element to be updated. And it is the only element out, element that we have that is mandated to be regularly updated over the planning, over our planning period. We'll go back to the general plan, let's say. Our current housing element expires in two thousand nineteen, so this annual year. And our next housing element will cover the planning period of two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-four. The part of the housing element it starts with is the allocation of the RENA numbers, which is the regionals. Let me get the exact, right, words. The regional share of the housing. I'm looking for the definition I know of.
Regional housing need allocation.
Thank you so much, the regional housing need allocation. And that's how the process started. And that's what the state, the city's share of the housing. What they do is they project that statewide housing need over the coming planning period. And then they allocate it to each of the jurisdictions. And so they allocate the cities our fair share of that allocation. They do look at things like that our population is declining and other factors within our city and the county. But we do still get allocated numbers even if our population is declining. There has been a lot of changes in the housing element law requirements. They started, there was some legislation that was passed in two thousand seventeen and other legislation that was passed in two thousand eighteen. So to start off this whole process, staff had a telephone conference call with HCB to make sure that we were up to speed on what they're going to be looking for in our changes in our housing element over the planning period so that we could make sure that we had everything correct when it went on for their review. The housing element is also reviewed and approved by the state department of housing and community development, which is unique. The rest of the elements in the general plan are not reviewed and approved in that kind of, they're adopted at the local level. So it is a little different and there is a lot of oversight. And I know you guys are all aware that the state has taken this very seriously and they've tried to add more teeth to the law. And the government, governor has been going out and after studies that have not been adopting their general plan or their housing elements and have, or have not been submitting annual reports, yeah, and have brought some of them into compliance through that process some very recently. The city is not an outstate. We've always had an adopted housing element and we regularly, every year we submit our annual reports. So we're in good standing. We haven't violated any of those requirements. So going through the RENA numbers, these are projected numbers as I talked about over the planning period. These numbers are allocated by income groups. And in your packet, I had, you had the tables for the income groups that we, that they're allocated by. So we have very low household, income households. Those are fifty percent, below fifty percent of the area's median for Wollome County income. And those are the very low households. The other allocation is for low, and they're fifty to eighty percent of the median. Moderate is eighty, a hundred, twenty percent of the median. And above moderate is a hundred and twenty percent or above. And that's the income categories that we have to plan for in our housing element. The city has to demonstrate that we have enough zone property, properly zoned property to accommodate the numbers that are allocated to us. We do not have to construct them. We just have to make sure that there's the capability to construct those, exist in the city and that we have the number, the number of properly zoned properties to accommodate them. Our allocation this round, for very low, we have twenty-five housing units. For low, we've been allocated twenty housing units, moderate twenty housing units, and above moderate fifty housing units. For a total of a hundred and fifteen units that we have to show that we can accommodate in our housing element. Staff has identified a number of properties that will accommodate this. We don't think there's going to be a problem. We've done some constraint analysis. We have to make sure that the property is developable to the density. Just because it's, it's zone R three and it says it can accommodate twenty-one acre, the units to an acre, doesn't necessarily mean that it can. So we have to look at constraints regarding sewer water. We also have to look at the hillside ordinance, the city ordinance to kind of look at what, what's a reasonable development for the property. The other, and that's new, that's a new requirement. The other thing is they need to be vacant. If there's even, if it's a hundred acres and there's a house on it, they don't consider it vacant if it's all in one parcel. And so there's additional requirements that have to be met. We have, we have identified several parcels that are vacant, so I don't think you're going to, we'll have a problem over this planning period. The next planning period, there might be some, it might be a little harder to meet the numbers, but this time I think we'll be fine. And when you get your final housing element, it'll identify the parcels, what the developability of those parcels are and show that we can meet our numbers that are required by the state. So within the housing element itself, the house, we, there's certain things that have to be included and I have them listed here. We have to have, we have to identify and do the analysis of existing and projecting housing needs, which is what I just talked to. We have to do a statement of goals, policies and qualified objectives, financial resources and scheduled programs for the preservation, improvement and development of all types of housing in the city. And we have to, and I talked about the constraints that we have to identify. So those are the things that must be included within the housing element. Those are the broad, broad areas. You guys have seen housing elements before. You saw the housing element from last time. Colette, you haven't, but within the planning commission packet, you guys just also got a copy of. We had the goals and policies and programs that were included in the last round. And so, and then our annual report is where we show how we're meeting our goals and our objectives. So we go through each of that and to the state. Again, we're not responsible for building the houses. We're just responsible to make sure that we have adequate sites to accommodate them. So part of the process is data collection. And to accommodate, accomplish that, one of the things that we did is we did a housing condition survey. And a lot of you guys walked through and saw us all back there doing the home lope stuffing and, and tabulation and all of the work that went with that, including my mom. And we were back there and what we did is we did a mail-out sort of housing survey. And that went out to every residential unit in the city. And then we followed up, if any came back, we followed up and resent them, checked out addresses and. So we made sure that we tried to reach out to everybody that we could in the city and get the surveys out. We also did a PSA a couple of times to tell people it was legit so that they weren't concerned that people, somebody was trying to get their personal information. We did have people call and say, is this the real McBoy? And we were like, yeah, this is, it's fine. And they asked us questions and we answered it and told them it's totally voluntary, but we would appreciate it. So by the time the day was done, we were really happy because we ended up with seven hundred and fifty-four surveys coming back from our residents, which was, which was good and we were, or seven hundred and thirty-four, I mean. And so we were really happy that we had a good response rate that came back from our citizens. And I'll go over that data, data just in a minute. And the other thing that we did is we did some onsite, onsite multifamily surveys where I went out and actually met with project managers of apartment complexes and looked at the complexes. And I had a series of questions I asked them about our multifamily rentals in the city to kind of get a feel for what is going on in that area as well, not only our homeownership side of the spectrum when it comes to housing. So I have that data in there as well and I'll go over that with you as well. And then the funding for the housing surveys were, was, we wrote, was part of our CBG grant. And that paid for the staff time and the cost to do those surveys, including all the mailing, all the postage and the copying. And it covered all the, all looks and everything were covered through that grant. It wasn't a, it was a cost not borne by the city. So when you look, I'm going to skip over real quick and kind of talk about the survey a little bit and the stuff that was, the data that was collected. We talked a little bit about the methodology, but we did, in the city, we have approximately two thousand three hundred and ninety-nine housing units within a population of about forty, eight hundred and seventy is our current population per the department of finance. And then it's broken out by the multifamily, single family. And then the number of completed surveys, like I said, we got back was seven hundred and thirty-four. And that, and the total number of occupants that occupied those units was fourteen hundred and twenty-three. Of that, twenty-six were single family detached, two hundred and eighty-nine were single family with an attached garage. Hundred and sixty-one without a garage, single family. We had twenty respondents from duplexes, a hundred and fifteen from multifamily and fifty-four that were accessory dwelling units. So those were kind of the breakdown of the responses that we got back. When you look at the housing conditions, basically our housing stock is in pretty good condition. We kind of expected that. We kind of expected that. For many years, the cities ran the housing rehab program for our lower-income folks. We ran it up until 2008. It was for both homeownership and some home-only owners, as well as tenant-based rentals. And then in 2008, when everybody lost all their equity and everything went away, we stopped the program. And the last time we went out, this is the third time we've done a survey. The first two times, we went door-to-door. Staff went to every residential structure in the city. We dragged our family along and we did that. This time, we didn't, this time we did the mail. We're not required to do every residential unit, but we did the last two housing cycles. This time, we did the mail. Mainly now we're getting a little old. So, but no, got it. And it's just, and a waste of time that we mailed them out. But really, we're expecting a lot of issues on housing condition because our stock is in pretty good condition. And that's kind of the response that we got back. And then the same when I was out with the multifamily. We don't have a lot of issues with our housing stock, even on our multifamily side. Yeah, you're going to have some, but not all over the city. And so as far as condition, not a lot that we saw as far as condition to warrant all of our efforts going to housing repairs. But there were some things that did come to light, which we'll talk about. And we'll be proposing some programs and policies. The other responses we got back, 519 were owner-occupied, 203 were rental households. And that's not surprising because your people that own homes are more likely to respond to a survey. They're also more likely to respond to census data. You know, they just are. Your tenants are not as responsive to those types of things when they receive them. And then it breaks out. And the other thing is 358 were age 65 or older. And that's not surprising either because older people are more responsive to these types of surveys as well as, it's just the way that it is. And 315 were mentally, or I'm sorry, were female-headed households. And then, and that's just a question that we have to ask for the state. And then we did have some with children. 113 had children 18 or under. And then 150 had were households with mentally or physically handicapped individuals living in the household. Then we got into overpayment. Overpayment is if their monthly housing costs are 35% or more. And when you look at the difference, owner-occupied, most of them are right. About 35% of the respondents are overpaying. But the big concern is when you look at rental housing. And this wasn't a surprise to staff. It's probably not a surprise to you guys either because you see what's going on in the rental market. And a lot of the smaller fixer-upper houses are getting renovated, are getting bought up quickly. And they're getting renovated and they're going into rental markets or possibly Airbnbs. But they, 57% of those that responded are overpaying. So that's an area where there's definitely an issue. Where there's definitely an issue. Our rental, people renting are really being hit hard right now. So that is an area of concern. And we're looking at different ideas to bring back to you to help with some of that. And then there's some miscellaneous stuff, so I'm not going to go into all of that. But when you get down to, that was collected, when we get down to the multifamily, and some of them were restricted, some of them were not restricted. We went to 17, five of them were restricted, which means that either they're low-income, senior housing, physically handicapped, mentally handicapped type housing, they were restricted. There's only one senior restricted housing complex in the city, and that's Blackberry Oaks. And they, you can be senior or mentally or physically disabled to occupy those units. Right now, on the low-income housing that are restricted, they have a three-year waiting rate, waiting time period to get into those units. So they have zero vacancy rate. A zero, minus 10. I mean, they, they have no vacancy rate whatsoever. But even when you go to the regular market rate, they have zero vacancy rate. They consider themselves within zero vacancy rate. Of all the units that we looked at, there were only two vacancies. And they, they said they won't even have to advertise, just word him out that those units will be filled. So, and when we talked, we also reached out to management companies and talked to them about single-family rentals because these were all apartments, the first group. The single-family rental units, no vacancy rate. They can't, they don't even, they don't have to advertise. The units are getting picked up the minute they're available. So there's a couple of things. One is a lot of people want to, it seems like a lot of people are moving back to cities like Sonora. They want to be where they can walk to things. And there's a lot of activity for their, for the youth and stuff, a lot more. And we have a lot of healthcare facilities in the city. So people who are, older people are moving back into the city where it's convenient for them to get around in the weathers. They don't have the snow and ice that you have above. But it's definitely impacting our rental market. And we, it's an issue. So again, we're going to be bringing back some ideas and policies and programs and goals to try to address this because it's pretty blatant that we have an issue going on in our rental housing. So then, when you go back, keep going through this, there's a lot of information that I'm not going to go into tonight because of, in the interest of time. But it talks about all of the different breakdown of how old they are, how long they've lived in the house, how long they plan on staying there. And I think we have a lot more turnover than we used to, probably because of rentals. But also because I think our younger people tend to be more, they move more. I don't think as many people come in and, you know, because work at the same place for 30 years and retire, you know, and stand. It's just a different demographics than it used to be with our younger population. They're more mobile. That's probably why they're more renters. But the, the other thing that's probably an opportunity for the city is accessory dwelling units. We have never, since I've been around, we've never discouraged them. We encourage them. It's a way to pick up some units in the city. We're three square miles, we have limited land. And it does provide an opportunity for rental income for people that have a house and they would like to have an accessory dwelling unit. And it also provides more housing for the city, a small city that doesn't have a lot of opportunities. One of the things we are going to probably have to have a conversation on though is, are we going to want those for Airbnbs? Or if we're going to allow people to have reduced requirements for an accessory dwelling unit, do they have to be for long-term rents? And that will be a question that we'll be bringing back to you as we go through, finish up this process as well. It's just something to keep in the back of your mind. Right now, we have approximately 34 Airbnbs in the city. And those are 34 units that aren't available for people to rent or buy in the city. So that is just something to keep in the back of your mind. As we start looking at adopting our accessory dwelling ordinance, there are some cities that are requiring that. But then the other flip side of that is who's going to monitor that and all of that? And do you, I mean, there is some benefit for tourists too. So, you know, it's a double-edged thing. So it's not an easy answer, but it is something that we have to look at. And then, so we had a total during the last planning cycle, we had a total of 25 housing units permitted from 2014 to 2019. Multi, that's multi and single family. The city's definitely, we don't have a lot of obstacles. I mean, and we just come in, get your permit. We have limited land, per se, but there's, and there's not a lot of subdivision lots out there right now. A lot of them have already been fully developed. And a lot of people, when the market crashed, they let their maps expire. So as things get better, hopefully more of that, the projects keep getting moving forward to allow more lots for units to be built. But we have had a lot of infill come in. And we have a lot more interest, I think, now in the housing than we had. And I would think with the rental market the way it is, that hopefully some of the people will be more interested in doing some smaller units for rentals. Affordable housing projects are hard. And they rely, rely on a lot of subsidies. We have been contacted by some affordable housing developers. But the city's probably, you know, there's a few spots in the city where it'll work. And then a lot of, a lot more availability out of county because of the amount of land they have. But anyway, so that's, that is that. And then the last part of this, and I don't, like I said, I won't get too much into detail because we'll be bringing you back some suggestions. But I just want to give you some, kind of a heads up of what we're seeing. The last part of this are specific comments that we've received. Because we let people comment. And then I divided them up from property-specific comments to kind of city-wide problems or comments. And then the last one are really comments that don't, aren't anything so much that is more outside of the city's control. It's just, you know, there's something that, there's not really, we couldn't really do a goal or a policy for them because it's outside of something that's out of the, out of what the city can do. So we kind of broke them up that way. There's some, some areas that we saw, some, you know, fire is a concern. There's a lot of that in there. There's a concern for the public. And this gives you some insight of what your public's thinking too, right? You know, fire clearance, insurance, property insurance for, because of the fire issues in the state. Homelessness. There's a lot of comments in there negatively about how homelessness is affecting the community and issues with that. And then the issue with housing and rental housing and finding places to live. So that's all in there. So we wanted to include those in there so that you guys could kind of get a feel for what people were thinking. And so that's all in there as well. The last thing that's attached here is the statewide and federal and state data that we needed to collect for the housing element. And those are the state and federal numbers that we use. And that's citywide, so that's a breakdown of all the city. And as you can see, from 2015 to 2019, we had a 3% decline in our population. And we made that argument to the state, but we still got numbers. We got renewed numbers. So, but we're okay, we can accommodate them. So just a couple of other things, and I'll shut up, is we talked, we talked to a lot of, any agency or government entity, including the county. We worked with, met with the county at the very beginning of this whole process. Anybody that does housing or housing-related services or needs to provide housing for the people they serve, they've all, they've all been talked to during this process, through our process by staff to give their comments, issues, concerns, feedback as we start, as we start putting it all into our report for you guys or into the element. We also talked to Tualpa Utilities District to look at where do we have sewer and water issues in the city which can impede development. And they also are doing the full analysis on every project area that we're looking at for our RENA numbers. We also had an open house here on July 24th for, to talk to people about housing in the city. And then at the planning commission, the August 12th planning commission, we had a workshop where we were talking through issues with the planning commissioners and anybody from the public that would like to come. And so we've completed our data collection. Our housing needs assessment and constraints analysis has been completed. We're wrapping up all of the data collection. We've been looking at goals and programs. We've been pulling adopted housing elements to make sure that we have our ducks in a row to get our housing element adopted. We anticipate that you're going to see this back in October. Again, HCB has to approve it. And so they'll go to HCB to make sure that we've covered all our ducks and got our ducks in a row to make sure we're meeting all this data law. And that there's not any other issues that they're going to ask us to address in our housing element or goals or policies they're not seeing that they want to see. So that's it in a nutshell. But I just wanted, we wanted to give you just an update to let you know what's going on behind the scenes.
Thank you very much.
That's it in a nutshell.
Awesome, baby, nutshell. Any questions for staff or for Ms. Kelly?
I do. Pages six through 15. Does this information go to the state?
The state, the state will actually, what will happen is, I have to close out the grants. So HCB's going to see this data in two different formats. They're going to see it as part of the housing element and they'll see it as part of our grant analysis as well.
I think she was talking about the general comments.
Yeah, the general comments.
No, we won't give them the general. Yeah, the grant closeout we will, but the regular general comment, yes. We'll, what we'll do is we'll do problem areas that were discovered, but we won't give them the rebate.
On the, towards the back, it's the population and housing data. The housing units, we have 2,470, but we only have 2,183 occupied. So that leaves 287 unoccupied. Is that correct?
So when the state does, this is all collected through the census? At the time when they're working on the census? So they project? And they haven't done the new census yet? And that was that point in time? Whatever the vacancy rate was at the point in time they did that, that's what, what they did.
So it's a, it's a projection of the 2010 census?
Yeah. And so they're getting ready to do the new census? So for all of you out there, please respond and send in the information for the census because it's hugely important to the city that an accurate census count be done. But vacancy rates are very point in time. So like when we were in our, outdoing ours and we were talking to the multifamily, zero vacancy rate. Five years from now, when this housing element's still in place, it could be a 10% if the whole world changes. So, yeah.
Anything else, Kelly?
No.
Thank you. That was very clarifying.
Okay.
Okay, on, you said 25 houses were permitted. How many were expected or planned for during this current?
So we had 100 units that we were responsible for. We had to accommodate the last time. The last cycle was 100 units. So we made 20.
And then the second part of that question is, for example, we have to have a set aside in property for 25, well, 22% of very low-income housing. If it's not economically viable and those don't ever get built, 90% of them don't get built, does that set aside? Count, can that same lot be used in the next cycle? Or does something new have to be found? Is that, is this written in stone for this area? I guess is what I'm asking.
So you are good for five years. But with the news changes, and Doug can correct me if I'm wrong, but there are new changes in housing element law. So five years from now, I'll be retired. But whoever's standing up here in front of you is going to say, okay, we had this property allocated for these number of units. This number of units got developed on it. If it's less than what was anticipated, then there's going to have to be a justification for why there was reduced density on that. If it has not been developed on, they have to explain what the issue is with that piece of property as to why no development occurred on it. That is totally new. We don't have to do it now, but five new years from now, unless something changes, you will have to do it. And I'm not, am I wrong on that, Doug?
Nope, you're right.
That's my understanding on the new requirements.
So if I'm hearing you right, they're saying you have to build things, or somebody has to build stuff that has no economic incentive. But if you don't, then there's have to be some punishment in the future? You said that the governor wants to put a lot of teeth and try to punish for not complying with his desire?
Yep, that's the teeth. That's, and what they do is the people that haven't been doing what they're supposed to do, they, where they get them is in holding back funds, state funds. And that's where the carrot's out here, you can't get those unless. But they are putting more and more teeth in, they're blaming local government for the lack of housing. And that's how they're, how they're addressing it now is through the housing element requirements. But so five years from now will be very important. But right now, we're okay. It'll be the next housing element where they'll have to analyze. It'll be the next housing element where they'll have to analyze what got developed and why it didn't, and maybe in the case, if the population's still static, the case is, you know, the population's still not growing and it's not feasible for developers to develop. But it's hard, and you see how low our vacancy rate is right now, to say there isn't a need because obviously people are overpaying on their rents and there's no vacancies, so there, it shows that there is a need, nothing else for rental housing. And that'll be what we'll be focusing on, on our goals and policies, is how to get that into the city.
Do you have state providing grants or any other incentives for developers to do what, I mean, to build these type of?
So there's a tax credit program for developing low-income housing, and then there's home funds, and there's different kinds of, but all of that is very complex, so, you know, somebody that's never dealt with it, they're not going to go build low-income housing because they're not going to, it's so complicated. It's usually your big nonprofit housing developers. A lot of your big housing developers, and I don't know as much as Tim knows this morning, he worked around it for years, most of your market housing developers in the back, way back, they had a, like a nonprofit wing with subsidiary or, and they would do low-income housing and they, they did market rate. Well, when 2008, when everything crashed, all that changed. So there are some affordable housing developers out there that are using some of the programs, and yeah, they're, they're looking around. They just have to see the need before it pencils out. But without subsidy, low-income housing doesn't pencil out because it costs too much to build for them to get the rents that they need. Because most of those are restricted to thirty percent, thirty-five percent of somebody's income. And you saw the rents in here, because we gave you that. And market rate housing rentals, I can't, you know, it's still a lot to build them. There's a lot to build them, so maybe.
California's going to be making it a lot more expensive to build.
Yeah, so maybe some smaller developments, but I don't think you're going to get any market rate big multifamily housing development, not at market rates. I think the, the cost too much to build them. And the costs aren't city costs. There's, their costs, the city doesn't control, it's the cost of construction.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a bunch of comments for later, but I just want to say the, everything was put together really well, very simple, so I think that's why you had so many people. It was very simple to, to fill out everything, so.
Thanks. We tried to be very appreciative of your time and say, thank you, thank you, thank you, please fill this out, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'd have to cancel for any comments.
So I'll make a few comments on here. Again, this is, this is really good. I know people in my age group or right around my age group are facing the same thing. I rent my home. It took us, Chelsea, I wonder, take, take me to get the house? We were in six months, seven months at least. I went to, five months, went to four different rental companies up here. At one point, and I'll let you have to get this in the newspaper because hopefully some of these rental companies will get a little embarrassed, I actually offered cash for six months' worth of rent, and due to the fact I went through a divorce, my credit rating's just gone. Like anybody that's went through a divorce, just about everybody has their credit rating just, just smacked against the wall, it's gone. And I was told it doesn't matter how much you offer, it doesn't matter if you offer cash on the spot, we're not going to rent to you unless you have an excellent credit rating. Well, I found a landlord who has been honestly a true blessing, and we're very thankful for him. He wasn't worried about credit checks or anything else. The rent was still a little high for the area, but there was a lot of freedom there. So we're very thankful for him, but the fact of the matter is, is that there's not enough rentals out there, and when you're able or fortunate enough to find a job for the most part, and I'm saying this because I'm out there in just what I would consider more the regular workforce, retail, that sort of thing, the wages don't add up. So you're paying forty percent, forty-five percent. You know, when, when my wife and I got married last year, it was a lot easier because we could go together and still have separate dwellings, but you have to have only two multifamily units available and ten family units, and then trying to rent those, it is extremely difficult. So another comment, I was talking to a realtor friend of mine yesterday, who's been settling in Tualpa County since the late sixties. He helped develop the area right off 108 between Jamestown and here. There was a lot of prefab housing, can't remember the name.
Millville.
Cross, Millville, yes. And he helped develop that area. I think he was responsible for ninety-three houses it came down to. And for our two supervisor candidates in the room, take note of this, please. He was told by the county at the time, even though that these were prefab homes and had, I think he said, seven different engineer stamps, not only on the plans, but on the buildings themselves when they were bringing them in, that the county went through every single one and took two to three weeks per one. And, you know, those are the kind of costs that we incur, it might put another $10,000 on a home, well, that's a lot more per month, so that's just something to think about. I, I guess that's all I have to say, I just, this is extremely accurate. Rochelle's, a great job, that you and the staff, great job.
Connie?
I don't have anything.
Smart, any comments?
Nothing else, really. Colored it up, all scary.
Thank you, thanks so much, Rochelle, for. Okay. Item number three under new businesses, consideration to cancel the September 3, 2019 city council meeting. Just wanted to bring to the council's attention our meeting for the next council meeting because of the holiday, they moved to the third. I won't be available, the rest of the staff will that day, but just to see if you want the opportunity to not have that meeting. There's one pending item, or one tentative scheduled item, which is the presentation by the visitors here, but there aren't any other pressing items for that meeting at this point, so we'll have a meeting if that's your preference or if you choose to cancel it. Who asks that formally cancel that meeting, but authorize the payment of budgeted expenses typically would be subsequent day. Okay, any questions for Sam? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, council discussion, any other motion?
I would say that we should cancel the meeting for September 3 and approve to pay invoices on previously budgeted expenses on September.
So was that a motion? Was that like a motion? Was that a motion?
That was a motion.
Oh, okay, all right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so a second if I collect. First, I, I would assume that if something does come pressing, that we would be able to, or we would, you would schedule a special meeting if we needed something in between them on the seventeenth or the sixteenth, I guess it is. Okay, is there any further discussion? I will call for a motion. Any, all those that can just say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Pass this unanimous. Okay, item K is monthly reports. We do have monthly reports from the community development department, the fire department, the police department, and the public works department. If there's any comment on any of those from anyone, public floor, council. Seeing none, I will go to item K, which is the Vision Sonora, Vision Sonora Committee Report, which there is none. Item L, which is Communications, which there are none. And item M, which is Councilmember Department End Support, we'll start back on the left, Chief New, do you have anything? Okay, Director Kellogg, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Police Chief Andrew Wiel, do you have anything?
Thank you.
Okay. Steady Attorney, do we have anything?
Don't want to break the trend.
And Mr. Miller, do you have anything?
I'll agree with everyone else.
Okay. Okay, more? Councilmember Williams?
Okay, I do have something. On eight-six, we had the Vision Sonora Design Committee meeting, but we continue, continue to work on the Linderberg mural. That was also National Night Out, which I attended. On eight-nine, I attended the ACTA Board Conference Call. We needed to, we have a new early childhood services director. Her name is Nancy Minor. And on eight-fifteen, I attended the CS EDD Board Meeting, and I want to thank the Public Works Department for installing the rubberized material in the playground area at Grisby Park that is part of the Vision Sonora project. That's it.
Okay, Councilmember Satch?
On the sixth, I also attended the Vision Sonora Design and Review Committee meeting. On the eighth, I attended the Yes Partnership Meeting, and I think, that's it.
You were at the CS EDD.
Oh, I was at the CS EDD meeting on the fifteenth, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Mayor Barson Hockens?
Attended the National Night Out. Department's holding down at Road Green Park, it was a lot of fun. I owe the chief one, since he got my kids to soak me with the water. They, it's funny, they were going to soak him, but, you know, of course he had his gun on his side, so he didn't want to get his gun wet, so I owe him one. You know, we have a great police department here, but it wasn't just police, it was, everyone was here. The prison was even here, so we were very fortunate.
Yeah, the fire department was here, the district attorney's office, Center for Nonviolent Community, I'm sure I'm leaving out somebody, but.
CHP.
CHP, yes. It was a very good turnout, so very good job, chief. Attended the Tualpa County Transportation Council Meeting, I was about thirty-five minutes late, but I was there, and I think that's all I have.
Okay, Councilmember Porter?
Nothing, Stevie, thank you.
Okay. I attended, let's see, I attended the Transportation Council meeting as well, the Fire Safety and Community Resiliency on August 15th meeting that's going on over at the county. Yeah, I think I'm leaving something out, but in the interest of time, I will search for it. Like to therefore adjourn the open session meeting of the city council, and we will be going back into closed session, and then if there's any report out, we'll point out. I don't think there's going to be one, but, okay, so we'll adjourn at this point.